Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everyone in the audience and those on YouTube today. It's Monday, June 17th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I just please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Before we move on to approve the agenda, I just want to notify the public that we are having a special meeting tomorrow. It deals pretty much in terms of budgets, just so the public knows. It has been advertised and it is a legal meeting, but if you're interested in the budget process, tomorrow would be a great day to show up. So everybody's had a chance to look at the agendas. If there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda for June 17th.
Move in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We can get right into our action items this morning. The first one is the meeting minutes of June 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I just sent those out this morning, so we might need to postpone those until next week.
Did you guys get a chance to read them this morning?
No.
Okay, so then we're going to postpone until next week. And we'll move on down. First, this next action item is the Department of Parks and Rec grant on Gordon Titus parking lot. Larry, are you presenting these?
I have not even seen them.
So who has this?
You have?
Chairman, I am. Yes.
Okay.
Bear with me one moment. My apologies.
Welcome, everyone. Good to see everyone.
Here's the Gordon Titus.
It was just from the IDPR grant. So there's no matching on that one. I think it's just a straight grant.
Sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventeen.
Matching on all of them? I wasn't seeing. Yeah, so. Sheriff Boat, Skidster, Gordon Titus.
Say that again, Larry.
Titus match is coming from McCall Snowmobile.
I was just looking for the match. Oh, our share. Okay, here we go. The total grant request is for sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Our match is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten. So the total cost of the project is ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So I entertain a motion to to, I guess, accept the grant.
Yep.
Yeah, to accept the grant of sixty-nine thousand, five seventy.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the grants for the Gordon Titus parking lot expansion amount of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars with the remaining to come from the McCall Snowmobile Club.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve accepting this grant in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Go down there. Where does it sign? One of them? This is repeated.
Yep. Sign on. This is a different one. Oh, no, it's the same thing. So if you can sign on there and there.
Okay, we're going to keep that on going. The next one is the Department of Parks and Rec grant agreement for the Valley County Sheriff's Patrol. Arch, Kevin, come on up. Good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Morning.
You having fun yet?
Oh.
Every day.
So I think I've got the copy of the agreement for the grant. Um, I sent each of you an email with this copy. Um, it's basically just saying that we were awarded the grant for the seventy-three thousand and some change for the new boat for Boat Patrol. And they're just wanting a signature for it to approve it. And then we can move on with it.
Where's the matching coming from, Kevin?
From Waterways.
Waterways?
Yes, we did a fifty percent match on it.
Awesome.
And then, so that seventy-three, it's actually, I believe, it's more around the sixty-five range. Because we had ten thousand in there for a trade-in for the boat, for our old boat. Um, we're going to put that out on state bid to try and get more out of it. So we can put that towards this. So it'll actually be less if we get one in ten.
Mm-hmm.
But we're guaranteed the ten anyhow.
So the matching will be less?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept this grant.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Idaho Parks Recreation Grant for the Sheriff's Patrol Boat.
Seventy-three thousand, one twenty-six.
Seventy-three thousand, one twenty-six.
I will second that.
Motion to second to approve this grant in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I can do this one too.
And I usually try and follow up where the matches coming from.
The IDPR, once they sign it, they can just get it back to us. For record.
So I keep asking about how we'll send it in to them and throw that in there with it. Sign a agreement back.
Just whatever the remainder comes from.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Excellent. Good job, Kevin.
Thank you.
Still my agenda.
Larry, I bet you're excited about the next one. Does this mean we get Boulder Lake? If we have a skid steer, does that mean we get Boulder Lake?
Well, I sent an email to the director.
Okay, the next one is for the skid steer for Parks and Rec. And Larry, you want to come to the mic?
Where are you going to store this?
Excuse me?
Where are you going to store this?
Um, my house.
Down at Wellington most during the winter.
Yeah.
During the summer, it'll be on a trailer, moving around from project to project. Keeping our parking lots clean and yeah. We've got that third building down there that we store the drag in, but we've been pulling it out during the winter, so it's empty. Eventually, I'll be coming to you looking for a building or a container.
Will you be able to purchase a snow blower for the front of that?
There's a snow blower on that. There's a snow blower, dirt bucket, snow bucket and trailer.
Need some forks to go with it, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You just donated him. Did you hear that?
Thank you.
You can borrow the forks.
This is for a sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollar grant. Our match is seventeen-four fourteen. The total cost is seven thousand, sixty-six dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the department, uh, or department, Department of Parks and Recreation Grant for the skid steer and trailer and the amounts that you just stated.
The matching's coming from where?
That was from ARPA.
Oh, from ARPA?
Mm-hmm, CIP stuff.
Are you keeping a spreadsheet of what you're spending out of those dedicated funds?
Now we are, yeah. Yeah.
Cool. Hey, we got a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Yo, what?
Um, Larry, just one quick question though.
You're rather busy.
If you're going to have this down in Wellington, are you still going to use the county backhoe to haul the parking lot? Is that?
Yeah, we will still use the backhoe.
You're still going to need that, okay.
We'll also use it to hopefully keep Boulder a little open to the Turkey Track so that we got a parking place up there, help to get them off the road up there.
So do we have a trailer to haul it?
Yes.
I'm wondering, Wellington's pretty far south. We're going to have to be hauling it around all the time.
Yeah, it probably won't be there a lot, to be honest with you. But, um, the equipment that we've got down there is in really bad shape for snow removals, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Action items also an action item. We were notified here a week or two ago that Kruger Company has settled an opioid an opioid lawsuit they settled for, I think it's one point two billion dollars. Go to the states and the counties. Um, in order to qualify for that money, you have to sign up for the settlement. So this is basically the approval for us to sign up for that settlement funds for opioid college.
I followed all the links. I couldn't find anything as far as what we were going to get.
No, they.
Anything or they haven't said anything.
No, because they don't know if it's going to be a one-time payment or if it's going to be spread over X amount of years. All those details are still in process and that's done with the Attorney General after the settlement.
And reading all that, I mean, do we, do we know that we should be signing up for this?
This is an agreement with the state.
I think we do.
We agreed to follow the AG's lead.
Right.
The AG, that was when it was was done. He's the one negotiating on our behalf. If not, you have to negotiate it here in county. So we chose years ago to go ahead and support the state and allow them to negotiate on our behalf.
Okay. Okay. So I need a motion and a second to sign that settlement.
I'll make motion to approve Commissioner Mopin to sign the.
Nope, the national.
Nope, nope, nope. This is a national opioid. I didn't see that one. For us to sign the national opioid settlement over company.
Second.
And motion and a second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do we have anything?
Mr. Chairman, we have that via DocuSign. I can email that to you right now.
And then we're going to move on while he's doing that. The last one on our action item is, um, approve Commissioner Mopin signing the Idaho Jim Grant Award.
So this was, um, came up as kind of an emergency situation last week. The Economic Development Council had written a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to backfill the housing, uh, study that's currently underway. We had lost the lot funds from a call when their lot funds didn't come in as agreed, so we were short. So this backfills that gap that we have to complete the housing study. So, uh, it had to be signed last week and resubmitted. We kind of missed an earlier email. And, uh, oh, I went ahead and signed it. Just looking to make sure you guys understood what was happening and why I signed it.
Well, and I don't have an issue with that at all. I just appreciate the fact that you're letting everyone know that it's so it's in the record. And it kind of protects your liability as a commissioner, so I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve Commissioner Mopin signing the Idaho Jim Grant Award. A second?
Second.
Move in second in all favor, please say aye.
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 I will abstain since it was me that signed it.
For the thirty-five thousand? So.
So the grant.
What was short?
So the hundred, we had to raise a hundred thousand dollars to do this housing study. And the county gave, I think, twenty-five thousand and then we had multiple different entities that were contributing. One of them was the McCall Lot Funds. And they, they put us at midpoint down on their lot funding. And we found out that we were not going to receive that, so we were short being able to pay the vendor. So that was, this was like an emergency. Yeah, backstop to that.
I just want to see it from my computer.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if that'll sign or not, will it?
No, because it's. Can I just stay up your computer screen?
You can watch me do it.
Yeah, I want you to. That's why I got white out all over my screen. Am I the only one that signs that?
Yes, sir.
We're good there. So we're going to move on down. The next agenda item is not an action item. Uh, this is a presentation from the Cascade Medical Center CEO, Tom. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to be here. Good morning, Doug.
Morning.
Uh, in case you have difficult questions for me, I brought my posse. We've got Randy Curious. Uh, Randy is our Chief Financial Officer. He's been with us a couple of months now. And then, uh, you may have met before our Chief Nurse, Terry Coombs, in case you have any clinical questions, answer. Thanks for letting us come here and give you an update.
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of changes.
Yeah.
Lots of decisions on.
We're coming. So, uh, what I wanted to update you on was our plan to convert our license type to what is called a rural emergency hospital. Wow.
That's a fifty-dollar.
That's fifty bucks.
Somebody didn't remind me.
Silence my phone.
You're a big boy.
Can afford it.
I'm mad.
So there's forty-two hospitals in Idaho. Thirty of us are what are called critical access hospitals. Critical access hospitals serve rural communities. You don't have to be a critical access hospital to serve a rural community. And there is another hospital type called a PPS or prospective payment system hospitals. Uh, and the, the key difference between a critical access hospital and a prospective payment system hospital is that critical access hospitals are reimbursed for hospital services based upon what it costs to provide those services. No lid on that. Now, that's what we are. We don't get a hundred percent of our costs reimbursed. We get about eighty-two percent of our costs reimbursed. Uh, and that's pretty typical. A prospective payment system hospital gets reimbursed by Medicare according to a fee schedule, a menu. And, you know, you either make money or you lose money based upon what they pay you. Prior to nineteen ninety-seven, so going back a ways, uh, all hospitals were PPS hospitals. And, uh, including rural hospitals, including Cascade Medical Center. And, uh, the problem with that was a lot of rural hospitals, including ours, don't have the volume necessary in order to operate efficiently the way that urban hospitals do. Our, you know, patients per nurse, patients per doctor, we just don't have the volume. We still have to pay nurses, but Boise hospitals pay nurses. We still have to be competitive on what we pay doctors and other staff, but we don't have the patient volume to spread those costs over. So in nineteen ninety-seven, the federal government passed a new kind of hospital called a critical access hospital, which reimburses hospitals based upon what it costs them to provide care. And then June first, two thousand, Cascade Medical Center took the leap and converted from a PPS hospital to a critical access hospital. Uh, and that has served us well for about, I'll do the math, I guess, twenty-four years. Hospitals have continued to close across the country, especially rural hospitals, because whether you were PPS or critical access hospital cost reimbursed, it still wasn't enough to cut the mustard. And every year hospitals have been closing and lately in increasing numbers. And so in, uh, night, or, uh, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty, the federal government passed a new law that made yet a new kind of hospital, and that's called a rural emergency hospital. And what that says is, okay, since a lot of hospitals are continuing to close and really small hospitals are having to spend a lot of their resources on maintaining inpatient beds to serve a very small number of patients, that that is stretching their dollars too thin. And they're having to close, which doesn't just close the inpatient side of the business. It closes the emergency side of the business. And that's what the federal government was really concerned about when they created this new category of hospitals. That rural areas were losing their emergency rooms. And of course, the problem with that is now you got to drive, in our case, it would, somebody would have to drive forty-five minutes to McCall or two hours to Boise if they had a stroke or if they had a heart attack or if they had any kind of time-sensitive emergency or even an emergency that wasn't time-sensitive but pretty darn painful, like a broken leg or something like that. So, uh, federal government thought that this would help solve the problem. And so that's why they created that. So we took a hard look at that over the past year and a half. The nice thing about us in our situation is we're not desperate, right? So we're not on the brink of closure like some rural hospitals in the country have been. We had the time to think this through and we actually, uh, used a federal grant to work with an organization called the Rural Health Redesign Center that is doing the analysis for many rural hospitals across the country about whether or not it makes sense for them to convert to this rural emergency hospital designation. So we've been working with them for about a year and there's a lot of math involved because they don't just change one thing, right? The, uh, the essence of the change financially is if you give up your inpatient beds, then, uh, you can convert to a rural emergency hospital. You receive about three point three million dollars per year in funding. That's no strings attached. It doesn't depend upon patient volume. You get that funding and then you are paid not based on your costs, but you go back to PPS, your prospective payment system model. And, uh, so you get this big uh, bolus of payment every year, actually you get it every month from Medicare. And then for every time you provide a service, you get less than you used to. But in our situation, because we have so few inpatients and because that three point three million dollars is such a big chunk compared to our total revenue, that for us, it nets out to improve our financials between half a million a year and one point four million a year, depending upon different scenarios of what you would consider. But the worst case scenario, five hundred thousand positive, uh, best case scenario, about one point four million. The reason that we took such a hard look at this, uh, is because we wanted to make sure that we weren't disadvantaging the community in, in any significant way. So, uh, Terry and, uh, Dr. Ellsworth, our Chief Medical Officer, looked at every inpatient that we had over the past couple of years. And turns out, we'd still be able to care for almost all of them. Uh, as we had before, we can still do overnight stays. It's called observation status instead of inpatient status. That's still allowed according to this new law. And so, uh, in fact, we can keep them for one or two nights, which is typical for observation care. But we can keep them for three nights and four nights if we need to. As long as our average overall over the course of the year doesn't exceed an average of twenty-four hours per patient. But we get to add in all of our emergency room patients into that calculation, which is about sixteen hundred a year. So we have no chance of getting anywhere close to a twenty-four hour average length of stay.
So do you hear? Um, so I understand what, what permits they're putting on you, but so when you do surgeries, I suppose, in your hospitals, in your hospital?
So we do not do surgeries. We do not deliver babies. Uh, we don't even do procedures like colonoscopies. Uh, we are a, a very low acuity, uh, hospital. We do primary care, physical therapy and emergency room care. Now, it's a great question. The question is, as we look to the future, we want to be able to make sure we take care of our community, not just today, but ten, twenty years down the road. Does being an REH, rural emergency hospital tie our hands in a way that would prevent us from adding new services? In the future, if we build a new facility or we expand our facility to include sterile areas that would allow us to do procedures and surgeries, then we can do procedures and surgeries. We can even do low-risk OB care. Sorry, Terry probably doesn't want us to do OB care. Because you need a lot of numbers for that and we have a really good hospital in McCall. So there's no need for us to duplicate that service, but the law allows us to if we want. And so those options are still ahead for us. We can still adapt. We can grow services. In fact, in the application process to become a rural emergency hospital, we have to specify, how are we going to use this extra money? Well, we'd love to be able to provide surgery services. There are, there's plenty of volume in our area for us to provide things like cataract surgery, given our demographics, um, podiatry services, uh, colonoscopies, those kinds of things, endoscopy. There's plenty of volume for us to do that here, but we have an eleven thousand square foot facility, eleven thousand square feet. There are homes being built in Valley County right now that are larger than our hospital. We simply do not have the space. Our hospital was built in nineteen seventy-four. This year is our fiftieth anniversary. We badly need to upgrade the, to the standards of model, modern medical care. Uh, we did try to pass a bond a couple of times. That failed. And so we need to think, okay, let's change our vision about what that hospital, what our hospital future can be. We still need to improve it. We still need to expand it. We maybe need to be more modest in what that vision is. But becoming a rural emergency hospital will provide us the funding to be able to, uh, either expand more modestly or to require a smaller bond in order to build a replacement hospital in the future.
Um, quick question. Are you allowed to save funds?
Yes.
Money that, so you can build up a reserve?
We can build up a reserve.
Awesome.
Yep, and, and we can also use, uh, that projected cash flow as collateral, if you will, for a borrowing loan, borrowing money from private sector or from the USDA. The other piece of critical infrastructure that we need is a new electronic medical records system. Currently, we share every one of, every patient that we see, we share with another healthcare organization. They don't just see us, right? They see us and they go to St. Luke's for specialty care or they see us and they go to a trauma service at St. Luke's. Or they go to the University of Utah, or they go to Intermountain Health, or they go to Coopney. All of these hospitals and hospital systems use a healthcare EMR called Epic. It's the largest and fastest growing EMR. It's an excellent system. We're not on it. We can't afford it. Um, but if we are able to convert to a rural emergency hospital, that's the first thing we'd spend our money on is upgrading our EMR to this, basically this Idaho standard. Then, as we exchange patients with these other hospitals, right away, we can see their problem list, their medications that they're on, and we, we transfer a patient out of our ER to surgery at one of these other hospitals or to an inpatient floor. They can automatically see what we did with their patient. Right now, we're faxing documents and we're talking to them on the phone and it's very old technology. This actually brings us to a much better place to provide coordinated, integrated care with other hospitals to benefit not only the people who live here, but the people who come here and flip their side by side and need to be transferred out.
So Tom, so your critical care is, um, very up to date as far as people that flip their side by sides or they're, you know, accident on the highway and they have to be in a facility like right now.
Yeah.
You guys are set up for, you know, stop the bleed, basically.
Yeah, uh, Terry and her team and our, our providers, uh, are amazing. They provide excellent care. Uh, they, i- if it's a time-sensitive emergency, they can provide stabilizing care. They, uh, we have telemedicine connections to the stroke center at St. Alphonsus, to the burn center at the University of Utah and other organizations so that if we need eyes to beam in and assist us in stabilizing a patient so we can transfer them safely to their facilities, that's also in place.
Tom, I know, um, I kind of got the inside information on some of this because of Sarah, but I know the, the technology is kind of your first. Is there some afterthoughts when you get the new technology, new software, all that in as far as expanding or remodeling or changing some of those long-term rooms to some other use? I don't know what, what the plan is. Have you guys talked about that?
A lot, yeah. Uh, so we are licensed for ten beds. But we actually just have six rooms because four of those rooms are semi-private rooms. So of those six rooms, currently two of them have to be used, are currently used for emergency room overflow, because we just have two emergency room bays. And a couple of times a week, Terry comes to me and says, uh, we're full, meaning that we have emergency room patients in inpatient rooms. We also use a couple of those rooms for a visiting cardiologist in order to see patients when he comes to town. So we don't actually have rooms that we can convert to other purposes. We are already using them as other purposes. In fact, that's, uh, we met with a group of about twenty, uh, local citizens to talk about this change. And their conclusion afterwards was it actually seems like being a rural emergency hospital fits you better than being what you are categorized as today, because you're not really seeing and taking care of inpatients. And so with the, with the extra funding, we can, we would have to expand. We, we really can't do much by converting our existing rooms because they've already been converted to their highest and best use.
So if you, um, to be able to say you get a bond passed and you can relocate, build a new hospital. I mean, would your vision be to have inpatient or just kind of expand on what you're doing with this, uh, idea that you have now?
Yeah, great question. It would expand on what we're doing with the idea that we have now. So over time, we can do, as healthcare organizations, we can do so much more on an outpatient basis than we ever used to. And, uh, and so that allows us to take. And, and so that allows us to take care of more people in that, in that way. And then if people really need inpatient care for more than just an overnight stay or two, they need specialists. They need pulmonologists, critical care docs, cardiologists. And we don't have that. And it's not in our foreseeable future to have that. Might we have visiting GI docs to do endoscopy and colonoscopy one day a week? Absolutely. Possibly even other types of surgeries, ears, nose, throat, podiatry, absolutely. But they would probably be on a visiting basis. The, the only kind of specialist that we might be able to employ full-time would be an ophthalmologist for cataract surgeries.
So I'm just, because I don't know. If you have like an ear, nose, and throat, or you have the cardiologist come up, do you guys make revenue off that person in your facility?
Uh, we could. So currently, when the cardiologist comes up, we don't. The law requires us to charge St. Alphonsus fair market value for the space that we rent them. But...
Well, there is some revenue.
Yeah, there's some revenue. It's pretty minimal. The reason we do it is just as a service to our local heart patients so that they don't have to go to Boise every time that they need their cardiologist checkup.
Awesome.
So my question is the long-term ramifications because that is a negative, you know, being able to convert back to a critical access hospital. If you envision the community, I mean, you got 450 lots here. I mean, this community is going to grow. So 20 years from now, you're going to be revisiting this conversation with a population of 3,000 to 5,000 potentially. And going backwards is not as easy as it is moving forward. I mean, it could be 20 years out before you have this conversation. So that would be the only concern I would have. My other question is, if you were ever to sell this facility, because that's what happened in McCall. Somebody else came in and bought it. Would they also be tied to this? Or would they, they would have to go through the motions to do something different, just like you would have to if they bought it?
So we have thought through that, what if, what if this area grows to the point where in two decades, it makes sense for us to have inpatient beds again? So there, the law allows you to apply back. It's not as easy because right now, the application is actually a, I forget the terminology, but it's an application of information. So it's just like, it's, it's a paper. You don't have to meet any new requirements to transition right now. But to go back to a critical access hospital, you have to meet all of the new conditions of participation, including the facility requirements, and that's the challenging one. We wouldn't be able to meet those today because of the age of our facility. So in order for us to be able to convert in the future, we'd have to have a, a new facility for sure. If we were to be acquired, then yes, they would, they would have to acquire us at whatever our license is at the time, which would be a rural emergency hospital. It's kind of interesting when we look at the 29 hospitals that have converted in the country to a rural emergency hospital. There's sort of three different categories. The first category, hospitals that they weren't going to close. This was a life preserver for them. They, they didn't care what the long-term ramifications were. They were going to close, so this was better than nothing. The second category was hospitals like us where it's a great advantage to do it, but they weren't going to close. And the third category is hospitals that are part of a system. And so they said, well, we got three hospitals within 45 minutes of each other. Let's convert one of them to a rural emergency hospital. And then they can send all their inpatients to the other two hospitals. So everybody's operating within the system at their maximum efficiency. And so if we were to be acquired, then it could be that a hospital might, the acquiring system might prefer us to be a rural emergency hospital.
But to be acquired by someone, that's kind of up to you guys to make that decision. It's not like they can come in and take over, correct?
Correct. It would be up to our board of trustees and perhaps beyond that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think the business model is an awesome idea. I guess, being a commissioner long enough, the only thing I would be concerned about is the 3-plus million you get from Medicare. Losing that or having that smaller and smaller, kind of like what we've seen with our SRS and some of our federal funding. Or is there an inflation built into it? So it goes up a little bit every year?
Yep.
Cover that inflation. That, that would be the ultimate.
It's written in the statute, federal statute, that it goes up every year.
Awesome.
Yep.
So that, that protects the long term. Awesome.
Yep. And there, there are bills introduced into the Senate and the House to improve upon the law as it sits. So there's certain pieces of revenue that we are required to give up in order to do this conversion. A lot of us don't understand why it is that we're required to give up these smaller sources of revenue. One's called a 340B program, which is, allows us to get a certain percentage back of the prescriptions that our providers write for Medicare patients that are, that are dispensed at local pharmacies. So that's called the 340B program. And we get a little money from that. But if we convert, we're not allowed to get that money anymore. And some legislators are scratching their head saying, well, why would that be? That doesn't make sense. Well, pharmacies have pretty good lobbyists, and they spend a lot of money in Washington DC. And the big pharma does not like giving some of their money to us little hospitals. So they've been effective in, at least in the initial law, to make us give up our 340B program. But there, as I said, there's, there is, there are bills being introduced on both the House and the Senate side to correct that, as well as some other disadvantages of the bill. Of the law.
It's all coming from Medicare though, right? 340B is really, if you, if you take it to the top, it's still coming out of Medicare.
Medicare does oversee the program. The money comes from the pharmacies, excuse me, from the pharmaceutical companies. Yeah. So instead of them making 100 bucks off a prescription for Cialis, they only make 50 bucks because they have to give the other 50 bucks, a little to us and a little to the pharmacy.
And you guys didn't qualify for ARPA or any of those funds, correct?
Uh, we received a couple million dollars in funds from the CARES Act. Was that what it was called? So the, from COVID. But ARPA categorized funds we did not receive.
So Randy or Terry, you guys have anything else you want to add? Say or state or?
I mean, the only, I just...
You need to come to the mic, Randy. I'm sorry, because there's folks online that are listening too.
Sorry, sorry about that. I did just get back from a conference in Atlanta. And generally, the discussions that are going on are very positive with some of these changes that Tom mentioned. So they are, they do, I think they, there is a recognition that they've missed some elements and they are going back, especially like being able to revert back at some time in the future, back to critical access.
That's what happens with a lot of bills. They initially jump in and then go, oh, we need to tweak this.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think this is a good program and that it's, it's preserving the rural hospitals, like you say, that are closing and they're necessary. And it's just giving them a different light of being able to preserve these guys. And yeah, they can ship their people to larger, you know, inpatients in larger hospitals. But still, keep a facility like y'all's operating, which is a much-needed service in this community. So it's...
Thank you for thinking outside the box.
Yeah.
It's what's critical in today's world.
Um, just for volumes, so you know, we have not had an inpatient in June and we had one in May and none in April. Most of those people need services that we can't provide.
Well, I think it's a great business plan. However, I think down the road, Sherry makes a good point that we're going to have to have a come-to-Jesus meeting as a community to say, this is not a big enough hospital. We're going to have to do something on a grander scale. And it, it just takes time, I think.
And have to have somebody step in that has the funding behind it, just like what happened in McCall. I mean, that's just kind of the business model probably for the future is bigs take over the smalls, unfortunately. Eventually, that will...
And I really liked the clinic in Donnelley. I think that's been a resounding success. Lots of comments. So that's awesome.
Yeah, it's, it's been a great way to serve the middle part of the county. And a lot of people live there and a lot of second homes there and...
And more coming, a lot more.
Yeah, a lot more coming, right?
Recreation, you're close to Tamrac, which, you know, I don't know how that's going to resolve itself. There's a lot of injuries off Tamrac.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, it's a, we had great reception from the local community. In fact, our weekdays have been busier than our weekends, which is a little bit of a surprise to us, showing that the, the local residents have appreciated being able to get basic care locally. And we're open seven days a week, 10 hours a day. So we're able to pretty much cover both the visitors as well as the residents.
Awesome. Great having another urgent care in, in the center of the valley.
Yeah.
McCall gets really busy sometimes and there's reasons to go somewhere else.
Yeah. And it was a good way for us to expand our capacity and footprint short of building a new facility. That day has to come eventually. But in the meantime, we're making incremental adjustments in order to do what we can.
Well, thank you.
We feel your pain.
For the update.
People aren't willing to fund EMS either to show up at their door. It's a little, little concerning for our healthcare in the future, so.
Yeah. Well, thanks you guys. Appreciate the update. And if there's anything you need from us, give us an email or text and we'll see what we can do to help.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, fellas.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Excuse me. Need to take a very quick break and then we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is West Hazard bids. We back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is opening bids for West Hazard. Fuels Reduction Number Four, I believe, Unit Four. Steph and Mara, welcome. John, good to see you. Haven't seen you lately. I like the snow.
You can't work that late?
This is by the four corners fire. We need money up to McCall.
That's another one. So I have four bids.
Yeah, 'cause Cookson called and they're probably not gonna bid on this one. But it's the same grant, but we just have it, we were able to move money to another, a loud location. So that we do this.
Location that's loud?
Okay, you guys got your pins ready?
Got them.
So the first one I'm gonna open, this is for thirteen point six acres, is from Bear and Loper Custom Works. And this bid came in at two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars per acre. Does it give a total?
On my calculator.
I'm thirteen point six.
At thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty?
Three hundred and eighty, okay. Okay, the next bid is from, uh, let me see here. Jeffrey Miller Excavation. And this bid came in at two thousand two hundred and five. Two-two oh five.
Twenty-nine thousand, nine eighty-eight.
Nine-nine eighty-eight.
Okay. The next bid is from. D and D Three. And this bid came in at two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. Two-two-two-five.
Thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty. Twenty dollars.
And the last bid is from Specialized Landworks, John Leidrickson. And this bid came in at one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Oh.
It's so nice to have competition in this.
Nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents.
Say the last part, nineteen thousand.
Three-six-six point forty.
Okay, so we have quite a spread on bids. What's your pleasure?
So before we do that, is there anyone that is currently out of favor with the county for non-compliance on any issues?
My recommendation that this low bid would be the last try. Get it right. We've had these conversations before and so we'll just be very closely monitoring. Every aspect. We did a formal walkthrough last Thursday with all the bidders attending. I wanted to model that for Mara and so that when that's a good option to do, that's how it goes. And we had an opportunity to talk. This parcel's right between the two arms of Williams Creek. So it's.
Good.
Anyway, so, yeah, we'll just keep a real close eye and.
Everything in the past though has been brought up to your, to the current standards, so they have fulfilled their previous obligations even though it took extra time and effort.
I made it clear that there would be no time extra on this particular job. We're time-sensitive and so there would be no extensions. So if their work was not being completed, then we would have to take measures to change.
Do, so do they have to provide liability insurance or bond it so that if they don't?
No bond.
They don't complete it, they don't get paid?
No bond because they're not paid until the work is completed.
Until they have substantial completion or inspected completion, they don't get the money?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Now, if they come and say, hey, I've done five acres, would you please come and check and it's top to bottom, complete? Then I'll put in a request for a payment. But a lot of them just wanna get the work done. This, you know, there's only six weeks on this grant, on this project allowed. So if they're not, you know, working at it consistently and quickly, there's no dragging on. You're not gonna see dragging on in any of the projects this summer.
Kind of surprised me they leave ten thousand dollars on the table.
So that's my next question is if we threw out the lower bid due to past performance issues, the Jeffrey Miller Excavation, is that a new? I don't remember that name in the past.
They got one that just completed the work over on West Mountain. They were that real low bid that we had in last November. But they did a very nice job and I welcomed them to bid again on this project.
Because we've had this conversation so many times, I'm a little concerned with a six-week window. And, you know, you guys are trying to get this stuff wrapped up, that it can be done correctly. So I'm concerned we're taking the low bid that's kind of not gonna lie. And these funds have all been obligated to this site. So if you take the low bid, it gives us an extra ten thousand dollars to use somewhere else. Will we be able to utilize those funds within the time period of this grant?
I'll have a crystal ball, but man, you're gonna see me every Monday for the next four weeks. We are pedaling quickly. We're going out in the rain to lay out two more units over on West Mountain this morning. And I've got another one I'm meeting back this afternoon that I just have to dot the I and that bid package goes out tonight. So we're struggling. It doesn't thrill me to have to find a spot. As it is difficult to get landowners to sign on. That's one of our biggest challenges. But, you know, understand what I, my preference isn't necessarily the deciding factor.
You don't, you don't like to babysit nothing. I dealt with bidding my whole life, so.
Well, Stephanie's trying to be Dawn. I mean, you know, we're trying to get her to the end game and not extend, extend, extend and make it that much more difficult to get there, so.
I'd make a motion that we accept the Jeffrey Miller Excavation.
Well, I think you gotta be careful here because the goal of this is, of course, to make the program cost-effective. And if you start knocking out the lowest bidder because they're not as fast as someone else, then you're gonna, I think, long-term, you're gonna end up getting expensive bids. My feeling is unless you've got a built-in to a contract with them that there's an ending date that they have to be done. Then I think we're setting ourselves up for a little bit of trouble there.
There is an end date. It's.
So I know, they all know that this has six weeks to get it done. And that's in the contract.
Which also why some of the bids are higher, 'cause they know they have to hire more people. They have to, you know, put more resources. So they have to be able to fund that.
Has the past performance issue with specialized been due to just a timing issue? Or the work wasn't quality at the end of the day?
It's a hard time with breakdowns and timing and. In the end, his work has not held up over time like some of the other contractors. We, you know, I've looked at more work, past work in the last three months because of Mara. We've toured everything and now she can recognize the difference. Just being honest. It's not something that I haven't spoken directly with the contractor about. He let me know this morning that he's desperate for work and that's why he bid low.
Yeah, I have a, just a question for you. Why didn't you go with the specialized, or no, let me see, those, okay, so Jeffrey Miller is the next lowest one. But it's another ten grand to do it.
I'm struggling with this decision. Would like any input?
Well, I've seen, I've seen people that bid low in my industry for the last thirty-five years. When they bid, well, more than twenty percent low, you get, you get the problems that come with it.
The hard part for me is, 'cause I'm willing to do whatever, but the hard part for me is that's gonna command twice my time. 'Cause I gotta be out there all the time. I gotta get a ten-foot stick and out there and measuring. I've got to babysit that type of of situation. And, you know, when we accepted the low bid last fall, we did do, we needed to do an extension, which we agreed to do through the winter. She knows that won't ever happen again. But I will say that once she did her first run at it. Spent time learning how to cure that and how to fix that, the rest of her work was exemplary. So we were able to fix that situation and look at her. She's low bid, but man, she's not out of the range at all. So I give her a lot of credit for learning a lot from that, being willing to take whatever hit there was in bidding low that first time. And then learning and coming back and I was thrilled. I signed off on her job two weeks ago and I was thrilled. Dang, okay, this is, this is what we're looking for. I'm gonna be proud to show the state this job when they come around looking, when we do our reimbursement. That's what I wanna do. I don't like going and saying, yeah, well, you know, there was breakdowns and there were timing issues and, you know. And I had to go back and the wrong species tree was taken or the limbing wasn't ten feet or, you know, those sort of things, which is why I had brought this to you in the past. But I didn't, you know, we gave him a job that he bid on over at French Loop and we did sign off on it. But we had to do it with, it went drug on and drug on and drug on. And it's okay, but it's not my favorite job that that we have out there. Just.
Well, I'm gonna second Neil's and try this Jeffrey Miller, or go with this one. And you can let him know that he's got an opportunity to bid in the future, but he's got to perform.
We got a motion to second to approve the, the contract with Jeffrey Miller Excavation for two thousand, two hundred and five dollars an acre. For a total of twenty-nine, nine eighty-eight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Then these are gonna write, 'cause I don't have the.
Ain't they tough?
Well, they're tough. And, you know, I understand people need work this time of year too, but you gotta perform. Sometimes you gotta make a stand and say, you know, what's gonna happen if you don't perform?
Um, I'm pretty excited. We did have another, a new contract that comes from Hershey Bend, came on the walkthrough. Um, he called me on Friday and said, you know, we just, this one, we just can't quite put it together in time for you. But we would like to bid on the next one and we're super excited. We love, 'cause this unit's right next to a unit we completed years ago. And he said, man, he said, I love what you're doing here. So our bidding pool seems healthy. And, you know, everybody's working hard with the small grants and other ways to keep these guys busy, doing private jobs, you know, helping them with that.
Is there a lot of jobs coming out of Boise County? Do you know?
In terms of the.
For these contractors?
Well, no, what they did is they set up a, a, one contract at six, about six thousand an acre. Our, our money is good here. We're, we're effective. But we encouraged this contractor to look into working with Boise County, right there in the background. So we want everyone to be successful. We don't want anybody to go out of business.
Here's the good one.
Okay.
And here's the landowner contract?
Yep, this is for a unit over on Bear Basin Road, kind of due north of where we're working.
Today's date.
It was sort of fun. We went around and looked at, she helped me finish the layout on that one. And it was kind of cool 'cause she can see the pieces to the puzzle and Bear Basin coming together. It's really fun to be able to go back and say, okay, we did this one ten years ago, we did this one four years ago, and now, thank you. And now we're back and finishing what we started in those places. So it's cool.
I see a difference in Bear Basin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Right on time, perfect. Next agenda item, these are action items. The first one is the K Park Recreation Claim Form for the seats, bleachers. Scott, welcome.
I got the claim there. Uh, do you guys have the claim?
Yeah.
So.
So I need a motion to pay that?
Yes.
Find it.
Here's a, let me go. It's not in our packet, is it?
Yeah, arena bleacher, just the second one. Eighty-two thousand, two eighteen twenty-five. So Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the K Park Recreation invoice. For the bleachers for the rodeo grounds of eighty-two thousand, two eighteen twenty-five.
Second.
You guys are too fast.
What are these, are we paying this out of, out of that same, that arbor pool money that we have?
And we got a motion to second to approve the claim of eighty-two, two eighteen, twenty-five for the bleachers for the fairgrounds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So do you need the claim or do you have one?
Yeah.
No, well, I have one of my, put it on the paper form. Can we all three sign?
Yeah.
I said, kinda have an update on the cost. Still have that sheldry for the lights. She hasn't got back to me yet, her bid on the, on the lights.
Did you talk to, um, to Toby? I talked to him.
Give me one, thanks.
I ran into him at CNN yesterday and we were talking about the parking lot up there at Maritidal.
Yeah.
And he said he'd been talking to Jeff, that Jeff can supply all the material. That he'll just do the labor and build the thing. He thinks he can do it for forty-ish. But he'll give us a better cost breakdown.
That's just, that's just the addition at the bottom. That's not gonna be doing all the upper and everything.
Well, I think we was talking about all the upper that you and I walked through, tearing all that out and rebuilding that whole parking lot.
I thought we decided last week we were gonna go out for bid on that. I know it was in the minutes I read it this morning.
No, we can, but I mean, if he can work out a deal with, with Jeff with the material. And you keep it under fifty thousand and county supplying the material.
Huh? Wouldn't that be part of the bid?
I think so, the county supplying all the material.
The, the issue I have, and it's nothing against the process, but we have no guarantee that it'll get it done. We need a contract to start setting dates and times and otherwise things just get drawn out and drawn out and.
No, I agree. I, I agree. We, we need that hard fixed ring from him or whoever.
Yeah.
That, you know, I can do the labor and put all this in if, uh, the county can supply the crush and, you know, the material. So.
We need a signed contract.
Well, they have asphalt, it's a whole different ballgame. That's, that's up to the county to decide whether Jeff and them do asphalt or hire somebody. But at least getting the, the whole structure of all, the whole parking area done. So, yeah.
Once we get it done, we gotta follow right behind it with the asphalt.
Yeah, I agree. And that's.
It's all part of it.
Comes out another money source. We have to figure that one out.
Did he find enough material to fill the south end of the arena?
I was down there.
He got that done?
Yes, that, that part's done.
Did that come from the road department?
I think he just, he kind of snagged it from right around the area there.
Well, the area there, okay.
No, I, I still think we need a, definitely a contract for any of that.
Well, I agree.
An RFP and maybe Josh could even give us a better deal. I don't know. There's other contractors in the valley that appear to.
Put it out there.
Okay.
I just don't like these handshake kind of deals 'cause there's no.
We've done that our whole life.
Well. That's where we're gonna, I agree.
You gotta have a paper contract anyway. You gotta have all the insurances.
That, that's the way it saves us money if we can, you know, get the material from Jeff and them, so. He might follow up.
So Scott, are you gonna do that contract or where do we need that contract to come from?
What's that?
For the RFP.
Uh, to write it up, we might put what, you know, requirements we want, uh, you know, regrading of everything.
The fixing the drainage. The fixing the drainage.
Put the requirements for the RFP on there.
That's good.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item, this is also, I guess, it's kind of sort of an action item, but this is the workshop in Lake Shore. To discuss grinding operations for the woody debris and construction debris. Mark, you guys, welcome. You guys wanna come up to the table? And if you can grab that mic and pull it over close to the middle, that would be great.
Jeremy worked on mics this morning, so.
Hopefully they're all working.
Scott, do we need to discuss this too?
I just wanna kind of give you an update. Like I say, I haven't got enough, you referred. She sent me a design, but it left center, kind of dark. So I asked her to, you know. Since crowds gotta look across, you know, she's just can't have it dark in the room. So she was gonna try to re-engineer something and get back to me.
Hey, so Scott, I'm gonna kind of turn this over to you. Um, I know in the past we've kind of had issues with the debris reconstruction and we're, who's in charge of that? Us or you or, we've kind of helped each other out. I don't know, one year we helped bring a, for a D four or D six cat to help pile and burn it. And I think we need some clarification on who's really that job.
Kind of got where we're at. I mean, they're gonna, you know, work with contracting, the grinding, we just gotta see what the numbers are and how it's gonna be handled. It's, it's not just grinding. This stuff's gotta be hauled off too. It's not just a grind and leave this big pile there. It's gotta be ground up and, and taken somewhere. So that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, so I, I think we were looking at two major goals here, right? Saving the county some money from what happened last year. You guys spent three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars disposing of the woody debris pile. The way we did it with Timber Creek and hauling, hauling that stuff off. I, I think we were in the ballpark when we were talking before we got started. We were at like two hundred and fifty. We didn't know how much was gonna be up there. How much they couldn't ship with the amount of contamination, right? The metal and all of those things that were getting up in there, the fact that it wasn't really segregated, so it took longer and things like that. I think we've already, uh, worked with Scott and our crew up there to, uh, tackle some of those inefficiencies by having it separated. Having, uh, the loads checked before they go up there, having guys constantly up there, making sure that we don't have. Everything and anything you can think of mixed in with that woody debris.
Well, that was two years' worth.
Yes.
Not one year worth, it was two years' worth.
So, uh, I met with the Timber Creek team, Mike Margadio, Mike Voldemort and their team and, and asked them, uh, what they thought. Uh, as far as this year and price increases on their end, mobilization fees, things like that, because they're bringing crews up. They gotta stay up here. They, they grind. We took those numbers, compared them to numbers with another like, uh, company that can bring in, uh, a grinder and do the exact same, uh, type of work that, that Timber Creek does. Just to make sure that those numbers look fair. Um, and then we started thinking about a, a different way to handle this. Uh, mostly when it comes to, uh, from our side, it's the risk factor, right? So a lot of the things we couldn't control with how long it took them to do it with the, the contamination and then winter came. And we couldn't get trucks in and out of there, uh, towards the end of the year and, and it became difficult, uh, on their side and on our side. Um, and so, uh, talking with, it started really with Timber Creek. Um, they've opened up a new facility in Napa. Maybe you're aware, maybe you're not, uh, two facilities, one for yard debris specific. And one, the transfer station there in, in Napa. Mike's, uh, Margadio's kind of opened up, uh, his business. Um, talking with him on what happens if we don't chip it? What, what, what happens if we just take that stuff loaded up in trailers and haul it straight to him and let him chip it on his own land? What kind of gate rate would he give us? Those types of things. As we looked into that, of course, doing due diligence, we looked and talked to some other companies. We found one in Boise, which is probably Timber Creek's number one, uh, competitor. PST, is that correct?
Yes.
PTS, sorry, uh, recycling, just purchased two hundred acres in Midvale. They're letting us know that we can come in and dump everything there. And when they say everything, they're meaning the logs, the, the stumps, some of these things that are hard. And for that matter, they won't grind the big stumps that we have. But, and I know this is kind of news to you, Scott, because we're still dotting our i's and crossing our t's on making sure this is a reliable, uh, place we can dump. But it sounds, it sounds even better than, than we expected. Uh, we can haul in there seven days a week, which helps us on the operational side. Uh, it's. a little closer than, uh, cause when you hit Midvale, it's still ten miles off the, off the, uh, highway there. Uh, so similar to, to Clay Peak's miles and turns when you talk about unloading load time. Uh, but we can load this material up, go down there. We're working on a cost with him. Uh, his first, uh, quote was seven hundred and fifty dollars a trailer for disposal. Um, if you add in that with the costs of, of hauling it, uh, and maintaining it with, with everything, it's still, from the numbers we punched in and looking at how many loads we're gonna do this year, it pencils out to save the county sixty to seventy thousand dollars just off the top. And that's not really even trying to, uh, correct some of the inefficiencies we might have on our, on our side, right? So, uh, we're requesting another long haul truck from our company if this is just, if this is the way, uh, you guys choose to maybe want to tackle this. Uh, adding another driver so that we can run kind of off our thing. So we're, you know, we gotta maintain this trash. It's, you know, especially after free dump week. By the way, last week was kind of crazy, but, uh, having enough trailers and having the personnel to do this, um, we're obviously gonna need a, a little bit more. And I think there's, might be a little negotiation, uh, with them on the gate rate. But at the end of the day, uh, it's still a savings to the county and eliminates a lot of risks that goes on up there, even with the chipping. Uh, you know, that stuff's sitting around all the time. Uh, there is the potential for fire hazard. There are, there are, you know, a number of guys working up there with pretty dangerous machinery and, and things like that. And so eliminating the risk and allowing us to control when and how we move this for you, uh, really sits better with us than having somebody come in and dictate to us when and, and, uh, how fast we're gonna be able to, to chip this stuff up. So really today, we just wanted to come and bring you some of those options. Uh, like I said, we're not ready to say we can a hundred percent do this, but I'd say we're eighty, ninety percent of our way there. We want to make sure that, uh, PTS, uh, you know, there, I asked him to send me a document guaranteeing us, uh, that we can haul a hundred and fifty loads of this there and that they wouldn't cut us off after thirty or forty and leave us high and dry. So we're getting that guarantee. Um, you know, I started sending emails last, uh, week to open up a, a, a driver position so we can hire somebody qualified to drive these things on top of the trash drivers that we have. That was just verbally approved from me, from my boss. Truck and trailer, those things we can work out, I think, uh, internally within Waste Connections. There's, there's quite a few trucks and trailers out there, but things we still need to dot our i's and cross our t's. Our big thing is that we wanted to come and talk to you about, uh, different options and, um, hear which, what kind of questions or concerns you guys have.
Um, does this include construction debris too?
Yes, it does. Everything.
Cause that was kind of the hangup. I know we can still burn. Cause I've talked to the DEQ guy and, and we can still use it as a training facility for the woody debris, not the construction. So there's a third alternative as well where there's very little cost. I think last year was a year we got a grant to pay for most of that. Um, I know we talked once about maybe buying our old grinder, trying to do that, but I think that's, um, that's gonna take a lot of cooperation with you guys if we go down that route. To reload that stuff, are you gonna have to buy a different?
We'd have to run another machine out.
Trac-o with a thumb or what? How are you gonna load that?
Uh, so we got a one sixty G up there as a rental right now that's in the transfer station. Right now, uh, until Eric's machine comes back, we would just continue the rental for the machine that's up there.
So one sixty G's, are they big enough to load this stuff into your trailers? Cause I think some front end loaders aren't, don't go high enough.
No, no, our loader couldn't do it. Um, I talked to Eric up there who's got twenty plus years' experience in machinery. Um, God knows Eric, he's a pretty reliable guy. He knows what he's doing. He knows what he's talking about. He told me all's he'd need is basically that excavator and he could get those trailers loaded. He talked about loading two every night, which we can just run them right down to Midvale, empty them out and then that way we're not running the machinery up there while the public's up there trying to dump, because I don't know if anybody's been up there lately, but that is a busy place up top.
I was there for free dump day for, with some scrap roofing and was really impressed how clean everything looked. Kind of drove around the site and talked summer and looked at stuff and it's, it's a long, huge improvement over the past years.
I think one of the things we got going for us this year is, uh, we've always had Eric up there for twelve years, but this is going on James's second, third year. And he's kind of, you know, the more retention you have, the more guys that get on the same page together. I mean, these guys have got a flow going. Summer and Nicky do a great job of checking the loads. You know, obviously we're seeing more run through the floor just because the painted stain, wood treated.
So those, those trailers, are they just a big box trailer?
It's a walking floor trailer, so.
Are they using that same type of trailer?
Are the logs and stuff gonna hang up in there and stuff?
Well, they should, you know, uh.
When we're getting stuff too long on the floor near Scott was staying, they'd get over there and like a, you know, a dimensional lumber beam, you know, would get sideways in there and they'd have to bring the truck all the way back with a partial load to, to get it out. Are those trailers gonna be able to handle logs and stumps and not get jammed up and?
Should be. I talked to the guy and he said, he asked what we were using and I told him, he said it shouldn't be a problem.
I know Scott used to tell me they'd get over there and they'd, you know, a piece of dimensional lumber gets sideways in there, jam them up and then they'd have to come all the way back from Clay Peak, half load.
That still happens every now and then. Don't, don't let me lie to you. That occasionally you, you do get that. But for the most part, Eric does a real great job of loading them. And basically what it is, it's those bars that run across the top of that trailer. A lot of things get hung up on those bars. If they're not packed down tight enough when it comes up and it jams up that load and sometimes, uh, we had one example Friday, uh, mom was at Clay Peak, four o'clock, nobody was there to dig out his load, so half of it come back. But I mean, for the most part, we do a pretty good job with it.
Um, and I'm assuming you're gonna get something with this Midville site here pretty quick? You know, like within the next month, weeks?
Uh, today? Yeah, should be today.
Cause I'm thinking, uh, and I don't know the budget close enough to know if we've got budgeted for this.
I was kind of waiting to see what direction we're going, so.
So this, as soon as we have those numbers, I think the better for us.
You know.
What do you think about that, Scott? About that process?
Well, if, if, if it's more cost effective to, to haul it underground over there and, um, we can keep up with it up there, I'd say that's where we have to go, you know?
No, if they can take, you know, if they can combine woody debris and construction in the same.
I, I have to keep them separate.
You have to keep them separate.
Yes, yes. But, uh, I guess something to think about. The one thing I liked about this is let's say, you know, mid-April, they start bringing woody debris up. And then like right now, we're into the middle of June. I mean, that stuff's crazy up there right now.
Oh, boy.
Uh, but when that stuff starts coming middle of April and we can get those trailers off that hill and you can start running it then, month by month. I, I think it'll help keep a cleaner, safer place up there for ourselves, the public, I mean, everybody involved.
Yeah, this could be nuts if we didn't end up with such huge piles before we address.
That's, that's just the thing.
Yeah, keep that deck up there fairly clear.
So Scott, because we had a grant last year, within your budget, did you have anything for this type of removal? Because you're still working on your last year's budget and we didn't use that budget. So you should.
Look at my budget line, but we.
You should have something in there.
Most of the woody debris got used up, but a lot went into the hauling.
Yeah.
Okay, even with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant?
So Mark, I'm assuming that it's gonna be cost plus fifty percent on your guys' side. So I think what we need to do, I, I think it's a great idea, a great concept. I like the idea that we can just haul it, we don't have to grind it here. We can do it at our time instead of when their time. Um, and that's gonna keep up. We're not gonna get the big piles. I think that's a great idea. The, uh, concern I'd guess would be for Scott to go back through his budget and make sure before we finalize in August that we've got enough to do this.
They gave me some numbers and then.
Yeah.
You know.
We got a little time left.
Into the woody debris.
Yeah.
You know, budget line.
So they're still gonna, say we haul it down there, they're, they're still gonna grant it. They still gonna charge us for the grinding, but it's on their side?
They want them charging this for basically the tipping fee at or the yard.
That's it.
They're gonna grind it, take care of the material, all that's on them.
I mean, seven hundred and fifty dollars a load is, is not cheap. Don't, don't get us wrong, but it's fair.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're still gonna have to sort through that stuff, grind it up and then transport it to wherever they're using it, so.
Do you guys get twenty-two ton on a load?
With this stuff.
So.
Eric seems to think.
Trash, we run, right, we're running right around twenty-nine thirty right now a ton. Um, with this, I'm, I'm just for safe figures, I'd figure half. Cause you got a lot of the brush that's just not gonna pack that well, but then you got heavier stumps, heavier loads.
Fifteen ton?
Yeah, that's what I was figuring.
That seventy thousand dollars savings that I, that I mentioned earlier was at fifteen tons. That's where I think the efficiencies and getting better at this and seeing what fits and, you know, I, I would say we could probably send Scott some numbers within a week. Give you guys a little bit of time.
Is that fifty dollars a ton and fifteen ton of load? If we grind it, we got that huge expense to get a heavier load. That's all we gain from that function.
Yep.
And it's more money to grind it to get a heavier load than it is to go in this direction.
Yep.
How do you figure those grinding costs?
And even grind it, you know, I don't know that you'll get the full thirty like you would with the trash. Those wood chips obviously ain't gonna weigh as much as a lot of the stuff we have hit the floor.
Okay, so I would guess, and I'm speaking for myself here on this one, that let's just continue on and see how, what kind of numbers you come in with.
Two questions for you, sir. How, how, how much longer are you here? I heard.
I'm here till January.
Okay, good.
And then I'm gone.
Second question, you talked about burning this and the possibility if we got all of the C and D out of there.
Right.
We could light the match on this possibly. Obviously a huge cost savings for you.
Obviously.
That is not my preference, so.
I'm just trying to gauge the feel.
Make that decision. Our community has raised.
Well, it is a no-brainer, but the issue that we're finding out is because of all the control burns, Forest Service is doing throughout the spring and the fall, people are tired of the smoke. I don't know if you guys ran last weekend, two weekends ago, it was pretty darn thick. Cause you are into the valley. People are tired of the smoke and if you get enough heat from your constituents, we're tired of the smoke, then we're not gonna go burn that. Add to it, that doesn't make sense.
No, it's been talked about quite a bit too.
It's not a clean process. I mean, you don't get stumps or logs burned. Then you have the ash on the floor of the deck up there that people gotta drive through.
Turns into a big old greasy mess.
It's just a mess. It's just, it's not a clean. If it, if it burnt to nothing, it would be great, but we still have, we still have to deal with the ash and try to blend it into the dirt and, and stuff so people aren't.
No, no, I just want everybody that's listening online that this is the choice the public has made. They don't want to burn it. They want to hold off. So it's gonna cost us more money to do that, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, cause we, um, the last time we burned, we hit it. I don't think anybody even knew we burned.
Right.
Um, the year before, we just socked in the valley and it was just, um.
Smoke is gonna be a huge issue, not just here and in the state of Idaho, because the plan now is about five hundred and fifty thousand acres of control burn a year in Idaho.
That's ridiculous.
You burn that much timber every year, people are gonna get tired of it. I think politically that it's the wrong thing to do, but.
Remember last, last time we burnt the Lake Fork site, man, it smoked up that whole area.
I think the amount of time it smoulders up there also, or continues to burn is.
Yeah, it's a mess.
And I don't want to start a forest fire either, you know? You do it at the wrong time and all of a sudden you get a wind and it'll pay up.
One thing we will have to look at, um, the gentleman at Jug Handle. If he wants that ground up there, um, you know, if we're not gonna grind it now, we won't have somebody up here to do it. But we're still gonna have to do something with the Lake Fork pile.
It's gonna.
How big is that pile?
It's not very much.
It's not a very big pile. Um. I think, yeah, they, they ground it in a day.
Yeah, they did, but the year before, the county burned that.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Last year we said, go ahead. They wanted it.
Creek went down there, grounded up and logged it off.
It was a quick deal. I think it was still kind of spending.
It's a pretty clean pile because it's from the fire wise. It, you know, it doesn't have big stumps in it. It's got a lot of, of the brown bags of, you know.
Do we have a cost on that?
What?
Do we have a cost of what just Lake Fork caused us?
I don't have that.
Why can't they just take that up to the site? I mean, if work can be.
You're out of space. You're gonna be out of space too, I think.
Well, if they're taking it monthly, you're not gonna be out of.
That's true. Be the bigger advantage. I think monthly, I think we got more space.
We need to involve Jeff on that conversation because I know a lot of the road clearing stuff that the county does, they take it there because it's handier, but now they have a new excavator with a brush head on it. They're not doing that much. Everything is gonna be ground right in the burrow pit, the left. So that's gonna change too.
If we change it next year, letting all Meckel dump it for free, I guess, up there is what it would be. And, um.
Well, it's.
Eliminate that pile down there and not have to deal with it anymore.
Hmm.
Well, it's costing us to take care of it on our end once they dump it at Lake Fork, so we may as well get it done free up there.
Does Meckel burn their pile? What do they do with their stuff? Meckel?
Brings it to us.
That's what they, they have some, they have a pile in there.
Well, they, they kind of, they use kind of both is what they do. I think some of the dumpsters that come from the fire stations end up out there and they kind of, I think, cause he, yeah, he always burns a big pile every year.
So another option there is we need to talk to Jeff first, get him involved in this, then we can make the contract with Michael that he's gotta haul it to the, the landfill and not off-site somewhere.
I don't know why it ever ended up down there.
I don't either. And I did hear, I heard something the other day that there was another contractor that was dumping on a site in Lake Fork and I, I hope it's not ours.
Yeah. And I don't know where, where Stephanie's contracts are going, that material. Are they hauling it to?
Well, Meckel hauls most of the fire station dumpsters, correct?
He, he does all of them.
He does all that, so we just need to have a little firmer agreement with him that it's kind of below the murf. And not in somebody's backyard or the county shop yard.
Yeah.
And that'll take care of that issue.
We need to find out from Stephanie then where those, all that's going to.
Right.
Cause I think that does get charged for because it's considered, you know, commercial outfit is doing, doing that. So it just must be the free stuff.
We've had some pretty heated discussion in the past about some of those issues because it's kind of an exclusive deal and but it's, it's not very much money every year.
Yeah.
It's the fire station dumpsters and that kind of stuff. So I'll get with Jeff and talk to him and see if there's a concern maybe for the road department.
I'm sure he'd rather not have the headache and deal with it.
No, I think he'd rather take it up there too, but.
Have it taken.
He'll come back with some numbers.
As soon as we.
And from, then he'll get from you.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it would take us more than a week to get, to get Scott's numbers, right? Your original question to start this off was about where we perceive the contract and what goes on up there is that it is our responsibility to take care of this with you. We've said since day one, at least since I've been a part of the team up here, that we want to work with you. We're gonna do what you guys want us to do at the end of the day. And, you know, just stick to that contract is our, kind of our guide to, to what we're doing, you know?
The best thing to do. We, we had figures back when you guys needed to pile that one pile, we helped rent that cat.
Yeah.
And that was kind of at least meet in the middle and we hub each other out, kind of a deal, but that didn't work. We got way too much dirt in that pile and it was, that was the wrong.
Yeah, the, the dozer was the wrong way to go. It really was.
Yeah. Yeah, an excavator with a thumb or something that could pick up a lot of stuff is the way to go.
Would you just like to see dollar per load? Just similar to what we do with, with, with the trash. It's like, I'll break down the cost because that's what the contract says. How much does it cost them to, to process this, this material and take it away? And so in my mind, that's exactly what we're doing. We're processing it, we're taking it away. Obviously the fifteen percent contracts, you know, it's not like I'm putting margin on top of it. This is how much it's costing us to do this. And then the fifteen percent would just be to manage it.
Sure, and the phone calls and all they work. I don't know, I'm tossing around, should we do it by the ton or by the load?
Well, the guy at PTS, he wants to charge by the yard. And basically just rough figures, the way we figured it was, uh, he figures those trailers at fifty yards is what he said.
Okay.
Well, that's good to know. That's a little thing you need to jot down somewhere.
Yeah.
So the, the trash, is that about fifty yards, same thing?
Yeah, I, I think he's cutting us a little leeway in all honesty. But.
Could be a little.
He just said for good round figures, he don't ask scales, so he charged by the yard.
And that's the guy out of Boise?
Out of Midvale, yes.
Out of Midvale.
So the savings will be how heavy you guys can pack those trucks.
That would be the biggest part of it.
Just pack the hell out of it.
He's not weighing them, so he's just gonna.
Right, he's just charging by the yard.
By yard. Figuring fifty per.
And I think the savings of not grinding it too, right? And then you, you add in the risk and the fact that we can move this stuff in April and October when.
You can do it after hours when it's closed.
Yeah, he says we can dump three sixty-five twenty-four seven, so it's a key to the gate. Nobody else is gonna be going in. gate. Nobody else is gonna be going in there. We can kind of control, control that. We'll, we'll help our operations as well. So I'll break down some costs, uh, and work with these guys to get Scott some numbers hopefully by the end of this week. And then we'll wait to see if you guys wanna have us come back up or how you wanna move forward.
Scott will keep us in the loop as far as the numbers and that. We just need that numbers kind of towards the yardage or the square, whatever. So I need just to figure out a budget for it. So we make sure we put enough in the budget to do that expense. We're also gonna do, is that gonna start this summer, a new floor in the, in the Murph site? Is that, do you know?
Well, I just submitted the Great West contract, um, for engineering.
Oh, so we're a ways out.
Yes, we're looking prior or not. Prior this year, we wanted to, from the cap improvement, put in the end of this year. So we carry over the rest. Probably won't do construction till two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a?
Hopefully this fall.
Is there a slow time at the Murph? Like December or January?
Yeah. Anytime that is not May through mid-October.
You fight the weather with this stuff, but these guys that do the concrete and stuff are used to that up here, right?
There, the contract, their ending date of completion is March of two thousand twenty-five is what they're.
So they're shooting more towards late fall to actually tear that out and report and all that.
And stuff, yeah. But don't, right now, um, I, I can send you, well, it's with the office, the attorney's office right now. They're reviewing the contract and then I was hoping they'd get it done this week so I could get it on the agenda for next. Great West would like to get signed the end of this month. Um, and then start the walk through and the engineering portion of it.
Sure.
I can, I can send you guys a copy of what they sent to me prior approval.
We can wait till, so Brian goes through it. But I don't think you need to do that extra.
You just wanna kind of, I just want to familiar yourself.
We'll see it here pretty quick.
You know, and stuff, but, uh, everything it's going to cover, even the bidding process and everything they're kind of covering in there and stuff. So.
So has there been any other talks about extending the transfer station or maybe down there by the recycle center?
No, there was some discussion a few years back about putting a similar facility to the east. So did we'd have to build the bank. So, and just building a duplicate of what's there at one time. And then we talked about maybe putting it down at recycling, but that's not a good spot because of the traffic and the people and it's already busy.
I, I was just curious with the growth that everybody's predicting for the future. We were kind of thinking about that.
Everybody comes down Lake Fork Road anyhow.
Yeah, they do.
Good to, yeah, I mean, dump trails come by my house.
Cause if you've ever been down speak, you don't wanna travel that road.
We probably need to have that conversation.
Back in oh five and oh six with Tabrac was really going gangbusters. We had, this is around thirty, thirty-two thousand ton a year going through that facility. So we can handle twice as much as what we're doing now. But I think we're pushing the limits at that. There was a lot of stuff left outside that we had issues with, but that was before I came in on as commissioner.
That should be part of the long-term conversation or what we're gonna do. But I mean, it is a transfer. We're looking at a long-term solution as far as the landfill itself goes.
Yeah.
We'll have more information in the next couple of years on it. But, um, I mean, the transfer site is gonna have to be able to handle growth as we move forward. So.
Well, it's kind of a lot of things when, you know, like, or when Great West did their study, you know, um, you know, there wasn't a recommendation to add another bay at this time to us. It was kind of if they, you know, didn't, you know, they feel, if everything's manned and equipment and everything's running, that it can more than handle what they got. I, you know, that's not my area expertise, but they seem to feel that, you know, if everything's running smoothly, it can handle what we're, you know, doing right now.
Well, they did back, I could say back in oh five, oh six.
So we probably should have a conversation about recycling someday. Um, I don't know how the recycling site, is it able to hold all of it now? I mean, is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Size of it is.
Yeah, it's going on. Uh, the recycling site's fine. I, I heard you speak a little bit.
And thank you for your comments, by the way.
Or last week in McCall. So, yeah, the recycle center's fine. I think the, the new building, the way that's set up, I mean, that, that is nice.
Yeah. That turned out pretty sweet.
Well, it's bailing up and breaking down.
Again, or somebody hits the building. Or somebody hits the building.
Yeah.
Anything else?
They've got time.
We're all good? Okay. Thanks you guys. Appreciate it. See ya.
Great idea, Mark. Glad you guys picked up on that.
More Terry's idea than mine, but.
And thank you.
Trying to find a win-win for everyone, right?
Oh, yeah.
I did talk to them on the phone last Thursday night, let them know that if there's any conversation about using the recycle center, that it needs to be a conversation with us first. And at this time, they went out for an RFP, not planning on using our recycling centers.
So our next agenda item is not till eleven. So we're gonna go mute and we'll see everyone back here at eleven.